There she is.
Thank you, Tanya. I want to welcome everybody tonight to our first budget workshop of the year. This is a big rollout and we're very excited about it. So this is the first meeting from...
I know you're doing that on purpose.
Right. This is the first night, this is the first meeting of the night. We have another one at 6:30, so at 20 past 6:00, I'm going to say budget is done and we're moving on to the next one on it. I'd just like to say a few things. I'd like to say happy anniversary to Bob Benelli and his wife Pinky, 14 glorious years. So we think that's fantastic on it. So we're very excited about that one. And just as soon as Mrs. Godier-Gucci, whoever she, whatever her name is tonight, I'd like to say happy birthday to her when she comes in. And I'm not telling you how many...
Do we sing?
Yes.
Let's sing when she comes in.
All right.
Be excited about that.
So in the meantime, we're going to start rolling with the budget and when she comes in, we'll interrupt you. Sorry.
That's okay. I can handle interruptions.
No eyeballs on that one.
Yeah, that was excellent.
Oh, yeah, great.
Ready to go. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Pat. Happy birthday to you.
Are you one? Just want to remind you, Mrs. Godier-Gucci, Pat, only for two months.
You are older than I am.
Only for two months.
But that's all she needs, though.
That's right. So let's begin our meeting with our budget.
All right, so we have a short meeting, so I planned accordingly. What we really thought we would focus on for our first meeting is budget driver. So we're not going over the completed budget, we're not going over our revenue, we're going over what's, the things that we have in the budget right now. We know this is a draft, so lots can change in the next month, month and a half. So that's what we're going to cover. This is just to remind folks that when we build the budget, we build it from a zero base to address the needs for teaching and learning. So we don't say to folks, here's your dollars, spend them. We want them really thinking about the needs they're building, what do they already have for materials, instructional materials, what do they need around meeting their students. We consider whether there's evidence of strong return on investment, so when we talk about what programings, okay, what are we seeing that's supporting continuing to purchase that curriculum, for example, like everyday math or Lucy Cawkins is what we're starting to implement at the elementary level. So, for example, the positive behavior support conference in Chicago led to a lot of positive changes in our schools, so we intend to send teams from all of our schools next year. So that was an addition. So those are things that we talk about, what did we see that really made a difference that we want to make sure every school has that experience. So really looking across all our schools to be equitable and fair. We looked through your school committee priorities that you gave in your index cards, so you'll see some of that response. For example, Ryan Fairchild will be covering a possible autism program. We've talked about creating more special ed programs within district, and so he's going to discuss that. And of course, Vision 2030, how are we addressing things in our vision through our budgeting? So you hear this every year, but a major budget driver is our salary and benefits. We're a people business, so you can't educate children without educators. So we employ over 500 staff, and so this represents all of our staffs based on their contracts. We are in teacher negotiations, so we have to be responsible in that. So there is contingency funds for negotiations. You need to go into negotiations, not with a set number, you have to be willing to negotiate. So, but this, the other amounts are based on our contracts. So you can see that the difference from 18, 19 to 19, 20 is $2 million. Some of that is due to the additions that I'm going to talk about. So there are additions to the budget, and that's what's causing some of this driver. Salary and benefits make up 95% of a total budget, and this increase of 2 million represents 92.7% of our total budget increase, just to put it in perspective. It's the biggest slice of the pie. We are anticipating a 12% health insurance. You know that that can fluctuate, so as soon as we get from MEA trust what the percentage is, we will adjust our budget accordingly. So we put in higher, it's better to come down than to go up. So that's what's in there is 12%. That is, we hope, will come down. So that obviously is in play, so I just want to make sure you know that.
And just to be clear on that, the rate increase reflects our mod experience that we've had in the school. How many illnesses have we had that we've had to pay for with our 500 employees on it? How many accidents that we have to deal with on it? So you have to remember that that's not just a number, that's what we actually have incurred in our system when it's finally done.
Right. So they do a comparison. If you're well, you make out better. If you've, if you've had a little bit, like we had a couple of years ago, we were using the emergency room rather than going to primary care or calling the hotline, so we worked with our staff to lower that emergency care use, and that helped us. We went, you know, our increase went significantly down. We know that our experience mod is up, so that's why we put a higher number in there, because we do know that we experienced that. They, they track everything about our employees, they track preventative care, if you were due for a mammogram, did you do it? If you're of the age to do a colonoscopy, did you do it? If you are diabetic, are you seeking your regular treatments? They track the whole staff and what they're doing in all their health, and then they create that mod, okay? So talking about positions, staff is prepared to talk about why we're asking for these positions. It's one thing to hear my voice all the time, but it's nice to see other people, isn't it? Yes. So I'm going to talk about Park Avenue because I did not, with all, everything going on, I did not reach out to Robyn Fleck, who is our ELL team leader, to discuss this, so I will discuss it. Park Avenue continues to have an increase in ELL population. Why we're asking for a position is the high school has two ELL teachers, and then their third ELL teacher teaches ELL and English. So in order to create a position, we need to fill in the high school's English position. So that's, what we're doing is we're taking half of the ELL position from the high school, and we're filling in that other half of the English position. So the teacher that's doing both will go back to full-time English. The position at the halftime will go to Park Avenue, and then we got to fill in that half. So we're taking a half, and then we're creating a whole. So I just want people to understand that. The Walton position, so I want to talk about Walton and Washburn a little bit together. Washburn, as you know, has been in school improvement grant, and we have seen incredible impact by that grant. And when things are going well, why would you pull the rug out from under them? That, to me, does not make any sense, nor does it, would it make sense to the Washburn community. They have worked very hard at getting students in places where they can learn, and when other students' behaviors are being, being managed, all students have excellent learning environments. And Washburn has seen that. You had a presentation by Washburn around the work they're doing, and they are doing that because they have the support of educational technicians. These educational technicians, Andrew, can you come up, please? So I want Andrew to talk to you about how important these positions are to their school community. They have four educational technicians supporting their school community. One will be funded, continue to be funded in our title grants, and one will be funded through a position that we have moved from the high school. The other two positions, we're asking for you to support. And then you also will see a math coach position. Lisa Coburn has been in that math position, coach position, first funded by title grants, then funded by school improvement grant, and now we're asking to support her position in the general fund. Lisa is a long time committed to employee for us, and we need to keep her expertise in our district. So Andrew, could you speak as to how these technicians are used to help support your school?
Absolutely.
I noticed you put a candy in, I'm sorry.
What? No. So the educational technicians are full-time employees, and they are pretty integral to the success that we've had so far in our current programming. So Katie talked about investment. These staff members have met with our PBIS coach, they've worked with students in small group social skills. Washburn is a unique school and a unique environment where, you know, behavior is constant, and in the presentation that I did earlier, we saw a huge decrease in that behavior. So with the support of these staff members, these ed techs, they are constantly intervening with students, they're teaching proper choices, they're in classrooms, they're meeting with teachers to provide strategies, and just kind of being there as an extra set of hands when a child is in crisis. So it is very important, you know, that we continue to look at that for the success. And our math coach, you know, Lisa has been there for the last five years as the math coach, we have seen a steady increase in our scores based off that, and we do have high teacher turnover, so she works very diligently getting those new teachers up to snuff with current math practices. And, you know, we've spent some good time learning about her philosophies that she's learned through the UMF coaching process, so, you know, we're gaining a lot more leadership from her from there as well.
Students, do you have?
248.
And your students are the least, the most mobile?
Correct.
Of students?
Correct.
And probably the most poverty-stricken?
Correct.
For the lack of a better term?
Correct.
On it, so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Andrew?
Thank you, Andrew. So, you know, as you said, it has high needs and it has exceptional students that, that need that support so they can be the best they can be in their education. Mike, can you come up? So Mike Davis's school, Walton School, has been identified as a tier-three school by the state. What that means is they qualify for additional support by the state. The difference between Mike's identification and what Andrew's identification was, and Andrew's school has not been identified as tier-three. So the work they've done has made a difference, but the state is not supporting to the same degree as Andrew's school has been supported. They're doing minimal support, but they're doing some. So they're offering professional development, Mike will have a coach similar to Andrew's school that takes them through, let's look at what current practices are, what are some of adjustments can be. So when we looked at return on investment, what's been working? We talked, when talking with Andrew, and you see the impact, we looked at Mike's needs, and he has similar demographics, similar needs, so we're starting with really talking about a math interventionist for Walton and a behavior ed tech three, similar to what Andrew has with his ed techs. So Mike, can you talk about what you're hoping with these two positions?
Absolutely. So when I think about return on investment and all the work we are doing with our teachers, one of the things that I see we have great success, especially at Walton, is with literacy, and that is really a big piece in part because we have phenomenal literacy coaches across the district, and we're fortunate to have one at Walton. And so over the years, what we're noticing currently is our literacy scores continue to grow, continue to grow, because we have such a big focus in that area. And now we're, we're saying to ourselves, we really, we're noticing some dips and some gaps within our math and in instructional practice, and so we're really hoping to provide our teachers at Walton with a math coach similar to the one that is over at Washburn, because they too have seen great growth. And so that's, that's our hope with, with the math. With the ed techs, one, behavior ed tech three position, we're really hoping, we're noticing behavior also in a high-poverty school, sometimes behavior is an issue, and we're noticing that behavior is becoming more and more of a challenge. And when a student is in crisis or having difficulty, who is there to support that? You know, the teacher is doing all the amazing things that they're doing in the classroom. Do we get the principal out of a meeting? Do we, sorry, Ryan, do we ask an ed tech from another classroom who should be there supporting other students to cover? And often that's what happens, and that's just because we're down manpower. And so by having this behavior ed tech three, they would work hand-in-hand with the teacher. We brainstormed today at my leadership team meeting about what would that really look like with the feet on the ground, and that would mean they would be in the classrooms, if you have classrooms who really struggling with behavior, they have that extra set of hands to be able to, just to give the student friendly reminders, maybe that child needs to go to another alternative workspace for a bit, and then re-enter the classroom, or so really it's about, and then also working with small groups of, of students, maybe there's self-regulation strategies, maybe this person can work with some, a group of students on some of these other strategies or coping skills so that they can manage themselves within the classroom.
Any questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
So that was mentioned, as some of you on your index cards to me, was how are we supporting teachers in their instruction? And these are the ways we support teachers, is when they need a student to be removed or supported, this, these are those type of positions that help the teacher be able to teach, and that was something that you all had mentioned as priority. In addition to this, that is not on the slide, is not a huge item, that's why it's not here, is we have a district positive behavior intervention support team. And we meet with Jennifer Butterworth, who you met, and Jillian Close, who you also met, and we discuss how are we doing across the district. They are aware that we've put in the positions for Washburn and Walton, but we said, how do we support the other schools? You know, we can't put an ed tech in every school at this point, it wouldn't be, cost, we couldn't, we couldn't do that, it'd be cost prohibitive. So what we just discussed was, we did a technology stipend for a teacher in each building to support website, to make sure that directors are up to date, to meet at a district level to, with Peter Robinson as their director, on what things that we need to do for professional development. So what we discussed is putting a stipend in for every school but Edward Little at this point, because of Edward Little's support with the assistant principals, and this person would be a PBIS support person. So they would receive a stipend, and we put it for the same amount as the technology stipend. This person would help support the initiative around positive behavior, they would be running those before-school meetings or after-school meetings discussing the data, they would be brought together with Jennifer and Jillian to review district work, what's working, what's not working, so they would be that connection, because one of, one of the wonderful things about Auburn is six elementary schools. One of the challenges with Auburn having six elementary schools is the sharing and talking amongst our schools, and who do you benefit from but talking with each other? So this is an opportunity to celebrate what we are doing well in buildings around positive behavior support, but it also lets us have a group that brainstorms when there are challenges to come up with different solutions. So you will see that. So I want you to know that we considered all schools' needs in addressing this.
I'm glad you considered all school needs, because I don't see my favorite school up there for anything.
I know you don't.
So I just want to say, it goes for you.
You're always in my ear.
They got one last year.
They did get a classroom teacher last year. Thank you, Michelle. So I am going to invite Bob to come up, Bob Griffin from Auburn Middle School. You know, Auburn Middle School, they, they are always on high, high alert with me of, you do know it would be beneficial to us to have an interventionist. Our teachers are working to differentiate, to do, do those things, but another position that they could have, they have an instructional coach who's doing amazing work with those teachers, especially with new teachers, with teachers who come into our district to learn what Auburn's all about. This person, Bob, is, has some different ideas for, so can you talk about what you're hoping for with this position, even though it may change, but what are you thinking?
Thank you for the opportunity to take a few minutes of, of your time. I've given a lot of thought in my, my time here as to really what do Auburn Middle School students need so they can be successful, and also what do the teachers need so they can be effectively doing, doing their job? And this is not, this is not my, my original idea, this, this has existed in other schools I have worked in, and also is a pretty common thing in some middle schools. There are some similarities into what you've heard from the other principals, but this would be, I'd be looking for an ed tech position for an interventionist, and I would see this person working out of a classroom space, and their role would be, would be pretty varied. For example, the student would be supporting some students with some short-term literacy and numeracy intervention, could be supporting a student who has been out sick for a week with the flu and is transitioning back and needs some support, could help with our PBIS implementation with some of the tier-one check-in and checkout things. Those are some of the things teachers say, I have 90 students, I, I have trouble with that. You know, a student who, you know, we know middle school students, they struggle with organization, their binders are a mess. It isn't easy for teachers to, to be helping with all that. This would be a person who is strong, has really strong relationship-building skills, could partner with the administration, the guidance counselors, our nurse, really focusing on what, what do students need? This would be really short-term intervention work, in a space with, I envision flexible learning, where there could be a couple of cubicles, some small table spaces, some desks, to be able to work with some small groups to support students, again, with academics, with behavior, and also with the emotional needs that, that we see at the middle school. I think this would really provide a level of support and service to our students to access this space and this staff member, and also support our teachers in, in better getting the support to those students.
Any questions?
No, I...
I like that model very much. I think it gives you flexibility, knowing all schools need this flexibility, and I'm looking at all the other ed techs that we're, we're looking for, or the, or the help in terms of coaches, that kind of thing. This is direct help with kids, and this is what is really, really important. And that way, it releases the teacher, so the teacher can do the job she or he really needs to do. I, I would like to have us take a look at this like under a magnifying glass and, and look at all of the, the schools to see, you know, is this not what all of the schools need in terms of the model for getting an ed tech to help and to make it flexible? I, I've used that in my own career, and I know I've done it with my teachers, it goes a long, long way. Thank you for thinking of that.
I agree with you, Alfredo, I think that most of the schools need it on it, it's just what can we afford? It's just what can we afford at this time?
Well, priorities.
And I agree, and it is a priority, that's right. Any other questions for Bob?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know Alfredo, you, you have questioned the importance of the instructional coaches, so we will be prepared to have instructional coaches because I think the administrators would speak as highly about their instructional coaches as they do these positions, so. But I, I know you had mentioned that. The last one here is Edward Little High School, so Scott Aneer could join us. You approved these two positions for the new high school. And when we talked about this, we talked about how important these positions are currently. One is the computer science position, which Eric Eiseman is serving in, which is obviously putting pressure on their science department. And then the substance misuse counselor, you know, Holly Lasagna remind me, it's not substance abuse counselor, it's a substance misuse counselor because they're not abusing it, they're misusing it. So that, I want to make sure we, we start using that term. And so Scott, can you talk about the needs and what those positions will be doing?
Certainly. We are in a very advantageous position with having Mr. Eiseman, who works in our science department, who's kind of morphed from physics into doing a lot of computer science courses. Some of that's robotics, some of that's coding, some of it is the programming that goes behind it. He has partnered with Carnegie Mellon to develop a curriculum that goes from, he, he reached out into the middle school last year to lay that foundation so that what is established is a curriculum that goes all the way through ninth through 12th grade. So by the time that they finish, they have an AP computer science program offering for them. So with that growth that he has developed with this, with these courses that really tap strongly into relevance and engagement for our students, that because he's taken on those courses, the courses that he used to offer on the physics side and offering some of that physical science piece, that's put pressure back onto the rest of the science department who've had to absorb those students within their classes. And they've gratefully done that because they see that this is a really emerging and growing area that benefits our community and benefits our students. We've had many students that have left us from that springboard platform of working with Mr. Eiseman to go into the computer science field. So in order for them to best serve their students, they used to have class sizes of around 20, now they're hovering around 26, 27, and that's really putting some additional pressure on them. So we put it in as a computer science position, knowing that's the trend in the field is to have computer science. And we're really, really lucky because when you look around state certification programs, they don't offer a state certification program for computer science. Usually you luck out into it because someone had a real interest or aptitude in that field. So we have that. So this would really be to fund for the computer science position. Mr. Eiseman would take that and then we would be able to hire for a science teacher in that area. The substance misuse is, it's hard for anybody in my mind to be able to argue for it. I don't look at it as a luxury, I look at it as a necessity. When we look at the needs that students have and the exposures that they have to a lot of substances, a lot of opportunities for inappropriate decision-making to happen, this is another tool for us to be able to support kids to make the healthy decisions that they, that they need to, to be able to navigate their high school years, to lay that foundation to be successful citizens. But importantly, when those situations do arise, to have someone readily available to be able to intervene right away rather than have to outsource in, in hope for, that the insurance picks up for the student one way or the other, having that person within our building, being able to work with our admin and work with our guidance counselors to identify those students sooner rather than later. Let's try to head that off at the pass long before we find ourselves in a crisis situation around substances with students. This is a very proactive approach and rather than being reactive. And that's the model that we've been for the last 15 years, is to be highly reactive when we're talking about substance usage. This is an opportunity to be proactive. And it also, when we go back in time and we talked about, we've heard about our substance, our suspension diversion program, there was some really strong data that came out of that when we partnered with the police department on students being out of school and leading into substance abuse issues there. So it kind of works hand in hand and so that has always led us on this path of having this resource of a staff person within our building and have readily available avenues for students to be able to support their good decision-making.
Any questions for Scott? Pat?
It's not really questions, it's just a real support for this. We've missed this position for years at the high school, very, very badly. And it's, it's a significant position and I'm glad you're putting it back in.
We, we were lucky because we lucked out because we had a position that held some dual certification and it wasn't intentional. And so because of that, it went by the wayside and the need didn't disappear.
So would this have a substance misuse counselor in the school five days a week?
Yes.
Because right now it's just one day a week, correct?
It's a full-time position.
Okay, so this would be, yeah. Because we're already hearing from staff that we really need them.
Absolutely.
Around the clock.
And through that growth of other folks having to take on some of those roles, I, I look at it as a tremendous opportunity because typically we look at this substance counselor as an isolated position. Our building is ready and prepared and eager for the staff to partner with them.
Right.
On an ongoing basis.
Good. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you, Scott. You will be having a presentation, the first meeting in April, on the Jewels Challenge. So Healthy Anna Skoggin will be here to discuss that. So you'll get more information about jeweling.
Katie, the totals for the, for the positions, that includes benefits?
Yes. So what, what we do is we budget around approximately $81,000 for a teaching position and $31,000 for an ed tech position. The Auburn Middle School position is not an ed tech position in the budget, it is a teaching position, just to be clear on that. So the other challenge you asked us to look at was special education programs. So Ryan Fairchild is coming up and explaining, yeah.
My left hand is up.
Yeah, explaining what he's proposing and the cost and the savings.
Like I said last time, the challenge here is for me to always stay seated, so I, I'm, I'll.
Well, the challenge tonight is going to be able to see if you can do it in five minutes at the.
Five minutes?
Ten. Ten minutes, this is special ed.
We have to adjourn.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so we talked like in, back in December, I was asked to come to the board and do a presentation about out of district and the number of out of district students that we have and how we can potentially save costs. So my proposal was an autism program, an elementary autism program, really focusing on students of age four. So we could potentially take kids that are four years old, are still in CDS, and then have them come into our program and through grade three. And the hope would be that we would expand it over time. Right now we serve 37 students. Thirty-seven stu-, thirty-seven of our students are served at Margaret Murphy. So that number constantly fluctuates and costs can range, if students have main care, anywhere right around $55,000 is what I estimate for next year. If students don't have main care, those costs can range up to 104,000 to 120,000, depending on their services. So we have 25 incoming kindergarten students this year that are coming from, from CDS. And of that number, I am concerned about, about maybe seven students, depending on various of needs, at least four of them would need some type of ABA Margaret Murphy-like type programming. I know at least one of the students I do not believe has main care. So that number can fluctuate. So our program really is to replicate the ABA, which is Applied Behavioral Analysis, giving one-on-one support for students, having a teacher, a classroom teacher, then having ed techs for each student. So there, you know, that's a little bit more costly than, than typical. We would not be billing main care right now because initially there wouldn't be many cost savings because we'd have to hire either a social worker or a full-time psychologist in order to do the paperwork in order to bill. So you wouldn't, we wouldn't, and then we'd have to hire ed tech threes as well. Where this way we're just hiring ed tech twos, we're not billing, so we are still maintaining some savings. But initially, but over time, that might be something that we want to consider into doing that.
I have a question, a quick question. Is it possible that you can collaborate with CDS, with CDS kids to use their personnel to help with the billing?
No, because CDS, you, basically is a, they do the referral agency and then they place students at Margaret Murphy or other facilities and then they provide the support, direct instruction. So whether it's Margaret Murphy or earlier Essential Learning Solutions, they will have all the staff that would have that. So what I would have to partner with some of these other programs. There are some ideas out there, I'm not really able to talk about them yet in the long term, but it is something that I've talked to Katie about. But I think it would, we really wanted to establish that. In order to make that investment, we would need more students, have it really established, have a really good solid program and see them, see it grow.
So where do you think you're going to house this?
He has? Which way are we going?
Ryan, so, I'm trying to go quickly here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking to house it at, at Walton, at Walton Elementary School. Couple thoughts around that. You know, every school is tight on space, but I think in, in talking with Mike and talking with some of the principals, we're able to maybe have a little bit of wiggle room on the main level, on the first floor of the school.
Of Walton?
Of Walton, of Walton Elementary School. You know, some of the other challenges, Washburn obviously is really small. You know, we already have a, a program at, at, at Fairview and at, and at Sherwood. And we have space issues at Park Avenue and East Auburn is tremendously small. So it really only really leaves one other school and just so happens that be, Walton is that school that has a little bit more flexibility in terms of space. So we'd look to, house it there, you know, we would look to have a, a teacher. So with the total estimated cost is around 81,000 for that. And then the four ed techs at $31,473. So each student gets that. And then, you know, I was able to talk to Jillian Close, our BCBBA, and she could spend five to seven hours a week kind of meeting with the staff, meeting with the ed techs, making sure, following the, following up on the behavior plans and then the instruction and providing some professional development, materials, setup costs, those types of things I could fund through my IDA grant so there'd be no additional cost to the local taxpayers here. So the estimated cost is around 211,000. And so your estimated savings right now is around $13,000. Now, that could be, that could be more, depending on the students that you have, you know. And I, the, the other piece of this is that you never know how many students. Some years, you know, you, you might have seven or eight. Some years you might have less. So, and, and it gives you more options. Not to mention the other benefit is, this is the, students with severe autism is the only population that we cannot serve in our public schools currently.
In any of our?
In any of our programs with severe autism.
Auburn.
In Auburn. We serve those students through Margaret Murphy or other placements. And we want to have a continuum, a full continuum where we can really identify and, and that mean, what that means is they're not in our public schools from kindergarten all the way through grade 12 or even up to the age of 20. We don't know their names, we don't know who they are, and they're not on our unified teams, they're not attached to us. And, you know, I would like them to have that opportunity to be here and to be part of our school community. You know, I went to the unified basketball game yesterday, one of the best games I've ever been to in my entire life. It was pretty awesome. We won by one, it was great, against Lewiston of all people, of all teams. So I just want to be able to have, more of our kids have those opportunities. So it, for me, that's more important. Obviously it's, you know, we're here at a budget meeting, so dollars and cents are important. But estimated cost is around 13,000. So it is going to be, you know, because we want to provide that high level of systematic programming, there is a personnel attached to every student. But that's what that population needs.
So will they, sorry. So will they be integrated into mainstreamed into the classes at Walton if, if at all possible?
If at all possible, at certain times, but not necessarily. Most of their instruction would happen in a discreet, in a very concrete and discreet manner.
So you don't necessarily need to house them in an existing school then? You could house them, say if we were, we could have housed them maybe at Franklin? If we could have?
Could have.
If everything had gone?
But yes.
Okay.
Oh, you mean if they had moved?
Right.
Well, ROTC SOS, if, when that SOS program moves.
Right.
But there is not space available.
No, and I think one of the issues too is, we want, we've looked into this in fire safety code issues as well about having students on the main level.
Right.
So how many stairs they can go up or down? Because if there's a fire, you know, they're five years old or maybe even four. So we looked at that and we actually thought about putting me possibly on the ground level, bottom level of, of Walton. But too many stairs, so the, the location that we found has an exit right outside. So even with Franklin, you know, there's the stairs that go up, that would be problematic and the same thing with ROTC. So, you know, there's a lot of strict regulations around that age group when you really kind of get limited. So I don't think that that would be an option.
Okay.
And it also kind of defeats the purpose.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for making this first step that I've been asking for, for a long time.
Not a problem.
You know, I really believe they belong in the neighborhood because they are our peeps.
I do too.
And I agree with you. And I think that we'll, we'll, we'll be pleasantly surprised to see what happens. We'll probably have a lot of additional kids who want to come here. And it starts with a few, you become successful, then you add on, you find space. And I do believe that they belong in each of one of the, the schools.
Thank you for doing it in nine minutes.
Awesome.
So that. Were there any questions? Anybody else have anything for Ryan? Okay. The last thing, I'll just give you this information for you to ponder for our next meeting. Our next meeting, we'll start to dive into each cost center. And, you know, March 13th, we have the straw poll. So we'll have to discuss whether we meet after the straw poll at seven, maybe in the Edward Little High School library to do more workshopping. But we'll, we can talk about that at our March 6th meeting. So we will meet next Wednesday at 5:30 for budget prior to our seven o'clock regular meeting. And there is a lot on the seven o'clock meeting. So we'll have snacks for next week because it's going to be a long meeting.
We may have snacks tonight.
Oh, look at this. Okay, so this is just class size comparisons for FY '20. Take it, look at it, and we'll go from there. And we're going to break and allow Tanya to.
We're going to break for about 10 minutes so that Tanya can set up the tables for us. And then we're going to invite the city council to come in and join us. And we're going to have a very cordial meeting. going to have a very cordial meeting.
All right. Thanks. A couple more.
Oh.
This is the third in a row of wonderful meetings with the city council tonight, and we're so glad that they're here, and we're glad to have an audience tonight. This is, we're going over again, the new high school, that's why we're here on it, and we'll go from here. Everybody remembers that this is a huge economic driver for our city. We're going to have the best high school, as the mayor said, in New England on it, so we're ready to rock and roll, and we have Mark Lee and Lisa Swan.
Swan.
Swan, from, as he says his name is, Lee. From Harriman.
Well pronounced, thank you.
From Harriman, and we're ready to go. So are you my lead tonight?
That'll work. I think we're connecting up the light show here. We're going to give an overview. I think for the last several sessions, we've shown the progression of the floor plan. We have talked a lot about some of the questions that have come from both the school board as well as the city council, and we've been saying to everyone up until yesterday that we were still at a point where we didn't have enough certainty with the Department of Ed to start sharing the total project budget. As I think everyone, or most of everyone knows, they gave us the green light very recently to start sharing where we are with the overall budget. It's still a work in progress, but it's at a point where it's fine-tuned enough where they're very comfortable with us going forward and making some of the preliminary assumptions public. So that information is there. What we're going to share then is the costs of that. We're going to then share some information that we had on questions with the geothermal costs and the payback, and then we'll share a little bit on mill rate, and then I think we've got a flyer that Katie and the school department have been working on, and we want to share that with everyone, and then I think we'll turn it over from there.
All right, so I just got a nod in the other meeting that we had, that we all need to speak into our mics, because out back and in the community, we are not heard correctly, if we're heard at all. So we come across garbled, so let's be sure that we speak into the mics, everybody, on it, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, I think we're moving forward. Hopefully, everyone can hear me ungarbled. The slide before us shows the projected construction costs on the far-left column that we have been sharing, and the associated project costs with the numbers, and those are the numbers for the local considerations beyond what the state would pay for, for the high school, and that's been consistent through our discussion to this point. On two-twenty-five, we worked out with, that was Monday afternoon, we had a phone call with the Department of Education, and we've settled on what they are using for a formula for the determination of many of these costs, and we also, on the share that they were willing to pay, and there's a couple significant changes, and so we'll go down through each line item and explain where they are. Most of the items didn't change significantly, but the formula that we used is now moved to square foot, an average square foot cost for the building, and so that's why there's some small changes from some of the costs in the left-hand gray columns to the right-hand orange columns. So that's why you see slight differences. So the auditorium, we had projected at about four-point-five-oh-five, we are at four-point-five-three-two, so a small adjustment in the construction costs. The overall project costs have gone down. We assumed about a twenty-five percent markup on what we call soft costs, and those are for things like to pay the architects to design it, to furnish it, for testing of it, and so there's those soft costs beyond what we have to pay the contractor to build it. Those were projected at twenty-two. Right now, in the most recent budget with the Department of Education, those are at twenty-two percent. So while the construction cost jumped slightly, the overall project cost came down slightly. The stadium, likewise, we were projecting at about a two-point-six-five-five, and that went up slightly to two-point-six-five-six, a thousand dollars, but the overall construction, total project cost rather, came down to three-point-two-three-nine. For the enlarged gym, the square footage that we're actually using from the plan came down, because we've included a few different spaces in the gym. There's now an office and a storage room in the gym, and the state will pay for those. And so instead of it being seven-hundred square feet, we're down to, I think, three-hundred-and-seventy square feet, and so that three-hundred-and-seventy square feet is now only a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars project cost. One of the significant changes was in looking at the A C, the building air conditioning costs, and the geothermal system, and we had been looking at those separately, so the consideration was, the first consideration is, do we want the building cooled, and the whole building cooled? And yes, we did, and so there was an incremental cost in the systems to cool the building. Then we said, okay, an additional enhancement is if we use a geothermal system for that portion of cooling the building as well. And in discussions with the state, the state said, well, we pay for half of a geothermal system, and so they said, well, we don't break it out separately like you have with just the cooling option. They said, if we're going to, with other projects throughout the state, they said, we will pay for half of a geothermal system for cooling the whole building, not simply an incremental increase from that. So I know that, and that's, it's a little bit of an adjustment in thinking from their perspective, and it took them a little while. And so what it did, though, the climate control, the A C, we, it jumped up a little bit from about one-point-nine million to just over two million, so there wasn't a significant change in the whole building A C component. However, because they will contribute to a geothermal system for cooling for the building, the incremental cost for the local community would only be about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to go to a geothermal system to cool the, and potentially to heat the building as well. So that was a significant difference, and the state is the one who said, we've done this in other projects, we want to be fair, and came forward with that suggestion, and so you can see that on their side of the geothermal, they, well, actually, you don't see it, but it's up to around two million, what they'll contribute for the geothermal system itself. The interior features are slightly, again, calculating using square foot numbers, so they jumped slightly from two-point-three-nine million to two-point-four-seven million. The additional parking, that base construction cost didn't change, but because of the soft cost reduction, that went down in value from eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand down to eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars for that. And the other big, or the landscape allowance, again, the base cost didn't change, the subsequent project costs did change. The program space is the big one. That's the one we've been working with them and saying, okay, we've done our best to make this plan as efficient as we possibly can, you've asked us to include space in the building for mechanical systems, and we've been suggesting to them, if you really want that, are you willing to back that by providing this, the cost for including that mechanical equipment in the building itself? And they have come up with a formula that they will pay for ninety-four percent of this additional, what we call additional program space, and that we are paying the six percent of that space. And so that was a big change. We originally had that, a construction cost of five-point-one million, that now has shrunk down to five-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, and so, and the project costs shrunk from six-point, almost six-point-five million down to six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. So that was a big consideration on their part. They needed a lot of time to get to that point in their comfort with that, and lots of questions back and forth with them, but that, when we heard that they were willing to look at ninety-four percent of that, we were all very pleased that we could share that with everyone, so. And again, that was pretty late in coming, where they actually felt comfortable enough with the plan and the efficiency to get to that point, so. So that was, that was great news. The next piece I've explained is the geothermal, and the last item is the second turf field, which, again, the only difference there is that the soft cost has shrunk to the twenty-two percent. So the total list of local considerations that we were looking at that had been about twenty-three million, mostly because of the geothermal and the program space, has shrunk down to about sixteen-point-five million.
Explain the program space to us, please.
Sure, absolutely. So the state says, we will fund a school at a hundred-and-eighty-five square feet per student, and we have a demographic study that identified, we have a population that they will fund of eleven-hundred students, and when we multiply those figures out, that gives us what the state says we will fund. We have worked hard to develop a floor plan that's as efficient as possible. There are a few local items in that. There's one office for adult ed program, there are, there's a few smaller spaces, and the chorus room is, what they will fund is a very small chorus room, so we have two-hundred square feet, which is not a lot, of additional square footage for the chorus room. And if we, so those are pieces that are funded through a local portion, and that's inside of that program space, as well as all the square footage beyond this hundred-and-eighty-five square feet per student that the state will fund. And so, and that amount is around nine-thousand square feet of space. The state said, we will pick up that nine-thousand square feet because of largely... cost in the systems to cool the building. Then we said, okay, an additional enhancement is if we use a geothermal system for, for that portion of cooling the building as well. And in discussions with the state, the state said, well, we pay for half of a geothermal system. And so, they said, well, we, we don't break it out separately like you have with just the cooling option. They said, if we're going to, with other projects throughout the state, they said, we will pay for half of a geothermal system for, for cooling the whole building, not, not simply an incremental increase from that. So, I know that, and that's, there's, it's, it's a little bit of a adjustment in thinking from their perspective, and it took them a little while. And so, what it did though, the climate control, the AC, we, it jumped up a little bit from about 1.9 million to, to just over 2 million. So, there wasn't a significant change in the whole building AC component. However, because they will contribute to a geothermal system for, for cooling for the building, the incremental cost for the local community would only be about $450,000 to go to a geothermal system to, to cool the, and potentially to heat the building as well. So, so that was a significant difference. And the state is the one who said, we've done this in other projects. We want to be fair, and came forward with that suggestion. And so, you can see that on their side of the geothermal, they, oh, actually, you don't see it, but it's up, up to around 2 million, what they'll contribute for the geothermal system itself. The interior features are slightly, again, calculating using square foot numbers. So, they, they jumped slightly from 2.39 million to 2.47 million. The additional parking, that base construction cost didn't change, but because of the soft cost reduction, that went down in, in value from 889,000 down to 867,000 for that. The, and the other big, or the landscape allowance, again, the base cost didn't change. The subsequent project costs did change. The program space is the big one. That's the one we've been working with them and saying, okay, we've done our best to make this plan as efficient as we possibly can. You've asked us to include space in the building for mechanical systems. And we've been, we've been suggesting to them, if you really want that, are you willing to back that by providing this, the cost for including that mechanical equipment in the building itself? And they have come up with a formula that they will pay for 94% of this additional, what we call additional program space, and that we are paying the 6% of that space. And so, that was a big change. We originally had that, a construction cost of 5.1 million. That now has shrunk down to 528,000. And so, and the project costs shrunk from 6 point, almost 6.5 million down to 644,000. So, that was, that was a big consideration on their part. They, they needed a lot of time to, to get to that point in their comfort with that, and lots of questions back and forth with them. But that, when, when we heard that they were willing to look at 94% of that, we, we were all very pleased that we could share that with everyone. So, and again, that was pretty late in coming, where they actually felt comfortable enough with the plan and the efficiency to get to that point. So, so that was, that was great news. The next piece I've explained is the geothermal. And the, and the last item is the second turf field, which, again, the only difference there is that the soft cost has shrunk to the 22%. So, the total list of local considerations that we were looking at that had been about 23 million, mostly because of the geothermal and the program space, has shrunk down to about 16.5 million.
Explain the program space to us, please.
Sure, absolutely. So, the state says, we will fund a school at 185 square feet per student. And we're, we have a demographic study that identified, we have a population that they will fund of 1,100 students. And when we multiply those figures out, that, that gives us what the state says we will fund. We have worked hard to develop a floor plan that's as efficient as possible. There are a few local items in that. There's one office for adult ed, ed program. There are, there's a few smaller spaces. And the chorus room is, is what they will fund is a very small chorus room. So, we have 200 square feet, which is not a lot, of additional square footage for the chorus room. And if we, so, so those are pieces that are funded through a local portion that, and that's inside of that program space, as well as all the square footage beyond this 185 square feet per student that the state will fund. And so, and that amount is around 9,000 square feet of space. The state said, we will pick up that 9,000 square feet because of, largely because we've said, we're, we're following your guidelines and asking us to put air handling mechanical equipment in the building because it's, it's easier to maintain, it'll last a lot longer, and, and it's, it's just the right thing. It's easier to distribute through the building as well. So, it's the right thing to do from a building perspective. It just takes up space and space costs money. So, they were willing to, to contribute largely in, in that direction. So, does that answer the question, Bonnie?
That was the last part that I was interested in, that we, because we did what the state asked us to do by bringing all our mechanicals inside, then we got sort of penalized on it. So, good negotiation, guys. Really good, really good.
It was, it was a act, act in patience, I think, too, and, and a lot of work on a lot of people's part.
What is the latest projection on payback for geothermal?
Ah, we're, we're going to get to that, I think, in a few slides. So, absolutely. Good, good question. Any other questions on this table before I skip forward?
Anybody?
Okay. So, this is the project budget sheet that we work in. And so, this tells you what the total, total project costs are, are likely to be. Again, this is not final. That's why there's a big red draft written across it. But it's, it's in striking distance to the point where the state is comfortable with where we're at in moving forward to recommend a project when, when we fine tune everything to the state board. The construction costs for the school itself, you'll see the first line item is $84 million. That is the building, the school construction for the building itself, and, and site costs. The 4 million that you see underneath it is for the geothermal and the additional square footages that we just talked about. And so, that, those pieces are the state's share of 89 million in the construction budget. The 13.5 million is from the previous slide. It's the construction only. So, to, when you add up these other soft costs, which you see in the, the categories B, C, you get to the D, which is that, that 22% markup from the construction costs that we saw on the previous slide. Those costs are, and they prorate them based on the percentage at the bottom on some categories. So, it's 86% is the state's share of the total construction cost, and it's 13.18% is the local share of construction cost, the way that this is currently built. And so, the, and that, the B administrative costs are largely the movable equipment. It's furniture, it's technology that we're going to purchase to put into the building itself. And, and so, the state pays again for 86% of that movable equipment line item. And, and the share, the local share is 529,000. The other portions of it are a contingency for the construction itself. We carry two-part contingency. One is, is a 5% bid contingency, so that it tries to accommodate any fluctuations in the market when we go out to bid. And so, that 5% is held for any changes in that, that the construction market might see. The other 5% is as we're going through construction, anyone who's ever done a renovation or a project understands that sometimes you come across something and you have to have a little bit, pot of money to be able to address it so that you don't have to, to cut out something in order to continue or complete your project. So, the state requires those 5% in both of those buckets. That's a standard that they use in all their projects. The next category is the fees and services, and that's largely the architect and engineer. So, that's, a lot of that is Harriman's fees. That accounts for 6% of the construction costs. That's, and that's another state that arrives at that percentage. And so, and then the other portions inside of that are the permitting and approvals, surveys, construction testing that's required, and a clerk of the works and a, and owner's representative or, or project representative that oversees the construction during the time that the building is under construction. So, eyes and ears on the site that are seeing this. And those fees, again, total, total up. So, that's, that's what the B and C and those soft costs and that 22% are. So, the overall project right now is a $125 million project, of which the state is on the hook for approximately 109,000, 109 million. And the community with the list that we have is about 16.5 million. So, that's the total project budget right now. It is subject to change as we move through the next few weeks to fine tune this with the state.
Up or down, subject?
We are nearly 100% certain that everything would be down. We, we've been very careful with the numbers that we're sharing and the state as well, that our cost estimates right now are on the conservative side of things. So, if anything, these numbers will come down.
Any questions for, for Mark on this?
Who selects the contractor?
So, the, the process for selecting a contractor is a public process. There's a period of where we go through and we do a pre-qualification. So, we look at contractors that have qualifications to undertake a project of this size. And then after that pre-qualification process, contractors submit bids, and then the bids are evaluated. And if it's seen as a responsive bid, then the, if all bids are responsive, then we go with a low bid on the project.
We're good to go.
The next one, I'm going to let my colleague Lisa talk a little bit about the operating costs for the geothermal system. Lisa?
So, at the last meeting...
She's still the issue. She did well last night with the issues.
So, I apologize for those at home that can't see that, this well, or see it very well. I have to take it out of presentation mode for it to show up. So, the operating costs for geothermal. At the last meeting, we discussed that if we didn't go with geothermal and we just had a traditional chill water cooling system, that the increase in operating cost would be 87 cents per square foot. And so, now that we understand that the state is contributing more towards geothermal, so when we look at the combined cost of AC and geothermal, and they pick up half of that, the cost to the local community just for the geothermal project cost is 426,588. So, when you take that with the square footage we have at 87 cents per square foot, that's how you calculate the return on investment of 1.8 years, is how it's calculating right now with the current figures. Did that address your, your question?
Yes, thank you. I wish Andy Titus was here to hear that.
He'd probably be watching it.
I'd be listing.
The next couple of slides are just going through questions that I believe were raised at the, whether it was the last meeting or in the meeting before. And so, this is information we presented last time on artificial turf maintenance. And so, this was provided by a vendor, different services that you would enlist their, enlist them to help you with throughout the year. So, every six months, grooming the field for $2,500, plus or minus. Regular attention to specific wear areas, brushing infill when displaced at about $1,800, plus or minus magnet service, which is if there's any metal shards within the field, for whatever reason, they come and they remove those. And then field design pattern service, and I apologize, I didn't correct the typo on that. It's about $1,500 for different patterns to be mowed into the, or designed into the turf, the artificial turf, I should say. What's changed since the last time is we reached out, and I'm going to try and put this back in presentation mode because it's, yeah, it's not going to let me. All right. Lot of text. Essentially, what this is, is comparing natural versus synthetic turf. And really, the, the big difference is the amount of use you get out of the synthetic turf. And so, there's, all these figures are based on 20 years. I, I have to point out that these are $2,001. So, it's not about the dollars necessarily, but really, the middle of this page where the gray bar is, if you really look at the cost per event and the number of events that you get out of each one of these systems. So, natural ga, sorry, did it again. Natural grass is $924, plus or minus, per event. And you can get about 1,520 events. Synthetic turf is about $66 per event, but you can get about 15,380 events off of the turf. So, the big difference is, is right there in the number of events and the cost for that.
Lisa?
Yes?
On the previous slide, I know that there was some discussion about speaking with the people in Lewiston, who have a brand new turf field. And one of the things that they mentioned is that they're able to manage a number of these maintenance activities themselves. So...
Correct. I think that was brought up last night.
Right. So, I think in looking at this, this is sort of the kind of highest end if we, if we contract everything out.
Yep.
Can you go back? I'm sorry, Lisa. Can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yeah.
Where did you pull this data from?
So, this was provided by a natural, or sorry, synthetic turf vendor. So, this is data that they pulled together to compare.
From the synthetic turf vendor.
Synthetic turf vendor, yes.
So, 2001 figures?
Yep.
You can adjust for inflation, sure. I'm looking at the discrepancy between, not the discrepancy, the delta between number of events on both synthetic and natural gas. And, you know, I would...
Grass, not gas.
Same thing.
Been a long day.
We're talking utilities a lot.
You, you all get what I'm talking about. So, we're looking at 1,500 events versus 15,000 events. I mean, this is a warm weather state, and it's put together by the guys and girls who want to sell synthetic.
Correct.
I'm doing some quick math here. And based upon those events, I mean, it looks like over 20 years, grass, $1.4 million, if that's accurate, versus synthetic at 1.2. If you look at it overall cost, and multiply it out by the events, and then try to normalize it amongst events. I mean, this data shows that turf is cheaper by about a half a million dollars in grass. But I, I still, and not to, you know, I'm still a little hesitant about believing the number is prepared by a vendor versus a non-biased.
Naturally so, yep.
And I think just going through that due diligence is important for everybody to know that, where that came from.
Yep, absolutely.
David?
I, I think that the point here is that the synthetic is going to be more, more durable. You're going to be able to use the field, whereas the other natural grass, you're going to, grass, where, where you're going to have some downtime, and you're not going to be able to have your events. And the other one's going to be more reliable. And if you, you know...
And not to put Todd Sampson on the spot, but our athletic director is here, if you would like to, him to comment at all, Mayor Lebec. So, that's up to you. He is here.
Oh, that's, that's great. I, I just...
If, if there are more questions?
No, I mean, I'm not trying to either say yea or nay to it. I just want to make sure the data is kind of clear than, you know. I love that, I love that model because it's a great sales model. But...
Todd, have you used...
Have him come up.
Todd, come on up, please. There's a place right here in the center next to Lisa. Please.
I'm talking to the mic so we can hear you on this side.
Yeah.
Me?
Me. Todd, have you spoken to Lewiston?
I did. I had a conversation with Jason earlier this week, similar to the point that was brought up. Those are all contracted services on that previous slide, that you would, you would pay a field turf company to come in and do those things. What Lewiston opted for, Jason indicated, was buying the equipment themselves and then training their grounds crew on how to operate those. And a lot of the cleaning, grooming can be retrofitted to equipment we may already have. That, it's just that, you know, John Deere or whatever company you use has several different options, and you can put those right on equipment that, you know, we may already own.
Okay. Any other question, any questions for Todd? David?
Yes, it's, will we need availability for the number of events? In other words, are we going to use it to get our money's worth?
You're talking to the athletic director, so I would say absolutely. But one of the visions Scott and I talked about today was really making this a community use facility as well. Obviously, our high school and middle school kiddos would have priority, but our rec department, you know, we live in a state where, you know, hopefully, we're going to be on our fields by April vacation. You know, across the river, in the middle of March, they're going to be on their turf field. So, it's going to be an opportunity. We're just going to expand how many opportunities our kids have, as well as how much they can use those fields. Communities and athletic directors that I know that have turf, they're, they're on it as long as their local ordinance allows. You know, they're shutting the lights off at 11 because they have to be off at 11. And there are youth soccer teams, there are lacrosse teams. So, I think if we're fortunate enough to get this, you'll see our community, whether it's our adults, our kids, using these facilities all day long.
Peter, you had a question for Todd?
I do. Todd, good to see you.
Thank you.
So, my question is, based on what other communities have experienced, like the town of Scarborough, for example, they've had turf for a number of years. I believe in benchmarking and looking at what other communities are doing, in this case, what other schools are doing regarding turf and what their experience has been.
Yes.
You may have had some conversations with athletic directors and other similar communities. And I think it'd be valuable to take that information and, and put it in writing for everyone to be able to see.
Sure. And, and I think one of the things we're, we're going to want to do right away is beginning, begin planning for that resurfacing, whether that's nine years out, 10 years out, 11 years. Where are those funds going to come from?
Right.
I think the communities that have had success have, anytime they rent that facility out, they're rolling that money into an account, planning for that resurfacing in, in eight, 10 years, whatever that's going to take us.
Did we, did we lease Lewiston this year?
Several times.
And did we helped them pay the cost down, didn't we?
Yeah, they, they've had some, their words, not mine, they've had some missteps along the way as they try to figure this out. And their rental cost was extremely low. They, they hadn't really gauged what other communities were charging for that, that rental fee.
Okay.
I won't publicly share with you what they charged us.
Okay. But, good. Any other questions for Todd?
Great deal, great deal. It rained a lot in the fall.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Orkenson's. Bob?
Just a quick question.
My, my, Tom. You're the culprit. Put that mic up to your mouth.
It's here. I think we're, right now, we're anticipating lighting only the, the stadium field. Okay, not the second turf field. Okay.
Mark, we've had a request from Jason to move on to...
Yeah. I think we're, we're okay then with our portion of it. I think right now the, the next conversation may be mill rate and, and the flyer, I think, are the two remaining items.
All right. So, are you going to say anything right now?
I am not.
You're on the mill rate, Jason.
Okay. I'm going to pass this around. Thank you, first of all. Earlier today, requested, if you could take one, actually, let me just split them up. That way it goes quicker. Earlier requested that we look at several different scenarios. And that's being passed around to you right now. Basically, the amount of bond, what the mill rate will be for the next three years, after year three becomes consistent for the life of the bond, though it does de, it goes down a little bit. Correct, Adam, based upon how the bond payoffs are. So, worst case scenario, year three, progressively downward thereafter.
Correct.
Looked at three different scenarios for us to look at. And this is based upon talking to the council. And I just want to put this all in perspective. Original base package, if you look down to the top portion, original base package, the bottom, $21 million. We were looking at when we started these workshops, excuse me, approximately, if you go all the way down to the yellow, to the right, bond plus the operating cost, additional maintenance, additional instruction time, we're looking at about a $1.09 increase to the mill rate, which was going to mean about $163, additional property tax for every home, for every $150,000 in home valuation. Looking at what we have right now, today, at 16.5 million, all the way to the right again, with operating costs, we're looking at 90 cents, or $135 per $150,000 valuation. Top, post $3 million in fundraising between now and, call it 2023, when they issue the bond. Looking at around 77 cents, the mill rate are $116. Now, I go to the far right because that does include operating costs. And I think that's important to know. Obviously, to the left of that, you'll see just a straight bond rate without operating cost. And you'll see how it increases from year one into year two, and then kind of stabilizes on year three. So, you can kind of see that formula. Obviously, the operation costs get tacked into year three primarily. And maintenance, the instruction does come a little bit earlier because you have to have it before you can get it with the state. So, you know, this is, as I like to, I'm very fond of saying, the bottom line. I think this answers a lot of questions that people, and especially in the public, have had, and I know I have. We now have operating cost calculation of about $405,000 annual. This is assuming geothermal. And the mill rate increase on the operational cost is 30, 21 cents, or $31 per 150,000. So, we know that. And that was a huge question. So, here we are with this. And I, I want to thank, before I go a little bit deeper here, I want to thank everybody from Harriman, Katie, Tom, Bonnie, the rest of the school committee and the building committee. It's pretty amazing. It's pretty amazing to see what I like to call a very bastardized, no kids in the audience. Did I just get one shot? Sorry. It's actual word, it's in, it's in the dictionary. But a process with regards to negotiations, this in the real world, it doesn't, it's not how it happens. So it's very odd, but I'm glad we're coming, we're to a place now where I think everybody can breathe and a little bit easier. So thank you very much for that. Now on to, kind of specifically to the council. Any thoughts? And before we go any further here, I'd like to do a little whip count. I'd like to know who's for this as is, who's not for it.
Okay, all thumbs up for those who are with it, and let's include the school committee with this, too.
As-is budget number, or for the bond?
All right, so hold it up.
And I, when I say as-is, I'm talking 16.5.
Four, five, six.
No, no, Andy. Okay, so right now, it looks like the city council's four, three, no. I'm going to speak to Andy Titus because this doesn't quite meet his expectations. So I'm glad we got that out, okay?
What is Andy's, what are Andy's expectations? Because I heard at the last meeting, it was 15 million.
Like the phone.
Oh, at the last meeting, I heard it was 15 million, and I think we recorded it at 15 million.
What last meeting are you talking about?
The last meeting that we had here. I beg your pardon?
Between 10 and 11 maybe.
He said between 10 and 11.
At post-fundraising.
And that should have been reported. That was Monday night, right. That should have been reported to you, your building committee last night. I beg your pardon? I said, was hoping that was going to be reported to your building committee last night. I attended it and it was not reported, but he did say 10 to 11 million dollars.
I never like speaking.
With some suggestions.
Bob? At the council meeting.
At the council.
I think the meeting that I think Bonnie's referring to is the last joint, joint session.
Right, right, right.
You know, and I talked to Andy the day he left.
Yes, I know he left.
And he'll be back by the 11th.
Yeah.
And I think it's very, it's safe to assume that at this point, at this dollar amount, he's a no. Could he be convinced to be a yes? Possibly. Could anybody here, you know, on the council, I should say, because I believe it was unanimous, I wasn't counting school committee. Was it unanimous on the school committee?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
No, it wasn't. D.
It was not.
I'm on the fence.
You're on the fence?
On the fence.
You know, and I don't want to, and I don't want to say, you know, everybody in the school commit, uh, city council is a no, the four people are a no. I like to assume based upon talking with them, you're all on the fence. Everybody's on the fence, I think, and I'm going to speak for the city council in this part. Everybody wants the new high school, everybody wants this to happen, but also, you know, there is a, different levels of consciousness with regards to what the overall cost is going to be. So we know where we stand at this point. Now it's a matter of how do we get to a comfort level, and my ultimate goal would be to a comfort level where we have a unanimous or consensus, unanimous consensus from the city council going into the election. Okay? Now, that might not be achievable. Councilor Gary's never voted for a budget day in her life, okay? I'm hoping this will be a first time and she breaks that. You know, correct me if I'm wrong on that, you've been on the council a lot longer than I have, but never voted for, right? Well, maybe, maybe you'll be the first on the, that might be a good thing.
Well, let's not focus on.
Well, no, but we're talking about focusing on unanimous or getting close. The question is, how do we get there? Counsel, any ideas?
I have one.
Bob?
I think the most important thing is for us, the, us as two elected bodies, but the community as a whole, the importance of this project. And, you know, over the last, and, you know, through the mayor's leadership, you know, we've gone to, into a phase of truly marketing to the outside. This project is important to that ongoing effort. I think, I almost take what the state has done by providing some additional funds. They see some promise here. To me, I think they kind of bent over backwards to give us a project that will be noticed. I think it would be, and I think we need that. I think it'd be a shame if we begin to whittle this down to a point where suddenly people that are looking from the outside that might have an interest in this community, invest in this community, or come to this community, if they look to us and say even they didn't really recognize the value of this to the community long run, they'll turn away again. And that's what's been happening over the past few years. People that might have come here 10 years, probably 20 years ago, they're not coming here now. They're looking at the other communities that have made investments in their education principally. And so I think the state, I feel, is encouraging us to move forward and really do have a, a school that we can really show and make it part of our marketing effort to encourage people to invest here.
So instead of standing in front of the old, instead of standing in front of the old DL for that wonderful advertisement that you do, you could stand in the middle of a state-of-the-art field, whole complex.
Listen, you're like two elections away, Bonnie, and I'm not going to jump there. Very well, might have a new mayor by then.
And I'm not talking elections, I'm talking that nice advertisement that you do.
I'll be there when my son graduates from the new high school. I think we're all there on a new. Bob, thank you. I'd like to hear from Alfreda or Leroy right now, just, you know, what are some of the things that are holding you back from a yes?
Well, for me, looking at what will make a difference with having the public accept us the first time around and not accept it, I think at this price right now, as far as the local, the local rate is still higher than what I would expect. Roughly 13.18% of the cost is the, the local bear of that, of the burden, the local burden. You know, most schools are expected to pay somewhere between 12% or more. There's no expectation that we have to pay a certain amount. We have, we really need to provide a local share. There's no question in my mind, we do need to provide a local share, and, and, you know, that is our promise. I think that we have a, a really nice building. It looks really nice. It's great that we didn't have to pay for the property. That's $0 on us. I think it's been well planned, but I do have a concern with the size of the auditorium. I think there is, there's nobody around that I know of who has a 1,200 size auditorium. I think that we could get a lot accomplished with less than that. It could save us some money that we could redirect toward the local burden. And I had questions about turf myself because I felt that it may be, it may be unhealthy in terms of the rubber. I know we had problems when I was a principal, we had to remove rubber fillers for when we put them in the playgrounds because they were toxic. So I have concerns about, are there any issues with the, you know, toxicity of, of the turf itself? And then having to replace it. It may be a wash as far as that goes, but as far as an additional field, you know, I was tossing around in my mind, do we really truly need it right now, an additional field? That might, you know, so those are some of the issues that I was thinking about. I would not like to see us, the, for three years in a row and for 20 years, we're looking at, the other point that I want to make is that we're looking at a hefty increase, but we're also looking at today's budget. There are increases in positions, that's going to cost benefits and salary prices. We're looking at budgets for the, for the county, budgets for the city, and budgets for the schools. So let's add those up in our head along with this, and it does create a larger local share in the long run. So if we kind of balance that a little bit and try to, you know, reduce that local share somewhat, I think it would be better for a lot of people who cannot afford this. And, and as I said, I know, Bonnie, you have said that, you know, everyone that you spoke with, you know, they're all in favor for it as it stands, and in my social circles, I'm meeting a lot of people who cannot afford it. They will pay what they have to, they'll give up on certain things that they can't afford, but I think that we still can go down a little bit in the local share.
What would you go down to?
I think probably about, I would say maybe 12 million.
12 million? And how many seats would you put in the auditorium?
Hold on, hold on.
Eight hundred.
Before, if we could, just be, I mean, just in the process of it, without, you know, asking for that, can we just get a collect, you can, I mean, this is a good process. It's a good, just ask, I'd like to ask you Leroy and Don, everybody says a no.
Can we look at the, at the budget page, just so we can be sort of discussing more specifically?
Because what I'm hearing is a practical argument and then a dollar argument, too.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's an important distinction, that it's not just about dollars, but it's also about the function and the practicality of what we're putting in. So, and if we can get all the noes out on the table, I think, then we can address them effectively.
All right, let's try it. Leroy?
Great. I don't mind talking about being around 10 million, 11 million, that's where I stand. Last night, we had a meeting in New Auburn, United New Auburn Association. It's, the people that show up there are the age 50, 60, 70, 80 years old. We asked them last night, could you afford a $100 increase on your taxes for a $150,000 home? The very first thing I asked them, would you like a brand-new school in the city of Auburn? And they all said, yes, we would. We would all love that. I said, well, how about if we raise your taxes there in, in the years coming forward here? $100 for a $150,000 home, could you afford that? And do you still want the new high school? They said, we want the new high school, but we can't afford that. Said, I'm, I'm living now and stretching every dollar I can, I can live on. We had 13 people there, 12 of them voted no. If they had to go without and they didn't have any money, they voted no. They don't want an increase. And that's only the school piece. I said, what about the city of Auburn? We're going to raise your taxes another $50 on top of that for sure.
Hopefully, that's not the case. There's no backing that, by the way. There is no, just.
There may not, but they know what it feels like every year that happens at this point. So I said, what about if you do that? They said, well, we might as well pack our bags and we might as well move out. We have a lady that's here that heard every bit of it that was at that meeting. The next meeting we're going to have is Thursday night. We're going to ask the same question. We're going to have 13 different people there. I guarantee you, 10 of them are going to say, no, I cannot afford $100 more added to my tax bill.
And I want to thank you, the lady that brought in our goodies tonight. They're very good. Thank you very much.
So Leroy, intelligence on that, did you, what did you hear was acceptable? I mean, zero or 80? Now, we're talking about the tax rate versus on the, on the mill.
I didn't ask them what's acceptable. When they said they couldn't afford it, it's up to the, the people that are elected here by them people, and, and the people in New Auburn elected me to stand up for them, and they're the ones that come to me and say they can't afford it. The ones that can afford it, they go to the school department meetings, they can afford it. They don't come to the meetings that I have down in the New Auburn area. The poor people cannot afford this. The people that are working, making a half decent living can afford it, and I understand that. But I also have to be in the place where, I'm not going to say in the last 10 years, the people that have moved to the city of Auburn are the only ones that want this. They all want it. Even the 80-year-old people want to see a new school. They can't afford it. And to drive our people out of this city so the next, new people that come in in the next 10 years can take over the places that will drive our people out of their homes, is just unbelievable that we think that that's okay to happen.
Leroy, you're looking directly at me, and I, I think we've been in this thinking mode that you're suggesting for the last 10 to 15 years, and it's been a downward spiral. We do have to invest. I think our parents before us, our grandparents before us, they invested for our education. There's a need to have a vision and look ahead, and we, and I am in that group, need to put forth and be sure that we do provide the adequate facilities and programs, particularly towards education.
You don't think $10 million is investing in our youth and our high school? That's a lot of money, Bob. A lot of money.
I understand that, but I think for the.
With all due respect, no, with all due respect, let's just keep going with the noes. I think we'll have, we'll absolutely make time, Bob, for your, because it's a valid argument.
Not cut anybody off. So if Mr. Hayes wants to talk, Mr. Hayes can talk, just like Alfreda and Bob and Leroy talked, so.
Yeah, we're just trying to get to the noes, Bonnie.
Right, and I'm trying to.
The city council. And I'm, if you want, if you want, I mean, I'm going to try to work the city council's mayor to try to get to that no, to that yes.
I'll, I'll yield by, I'll come back later because I have some other comments, but I'll yield.
You yield your last two minutes. Yeah, and with that, and that's fine. I just.
You've been watching TV today too much.
Court TV's back on the air. But if we could just get some of these noes, and that way, I think we can have that one and one comprehensive conversation. Belinda?
I too want the best education for our kids, and I'd like to see the new high school, but I echo what Council Walker says. In the people that I come in, in a daily walk around town or different meetings, I go to the more regular-type meetings. I don't go to the chamber meetings where there's people of a lot of money. They too, I mean, the people I go with, my constituents that call and talk with me, they can't afford a huge increase. And what they're looking at is threefold. If it was just simply the $31 tax increase, they might be able to do that. But also, you're going to take in consideration the school budget and how much the cost of things go up for them to maintain and to educate and do the whole nine yards. They're going to look at a certain increase. That's going to increase the mill rate. When you, Mr. Mayor, you kindly was trying to figure ways to make this turn out to be a yes vote. You were trying to slide some of the costs and some of the maintenance of fields and things on the city side. I mean, I commend you for trying to work down the numbers so that the new school can be built, but what, the unintended consequences is, by taking on more costs on the city side, when we try to hold the line and cut things, we're going to have a lot less wiggle room to try to do it. So my train of thinking is, each of these three are going to be additional costs to the mill rates to keep going up, to price the people that can't afford it out. I mean, is the city council, in order to keep the taxes low, going to flat fund the budget? We know in previous years, totally flat funding it, or cutting it lower than flat funding, has had dire consequences. Trying to work with the school, when I go into a budget, they know where I stand. I look at the city's money as one pot, and I tell the school right off the bat, I cannot fully fund you. They know right where I am. I mean, I, I don't hold no punches. Same as with the city manager, he knows I won't support a budget, and that's why I vote no, because I don't think we're cutting, not that I want to cut the school, but I can't give them everything. I don't think we're holding the lines low enough so that the average taxpayer can live here. We're losing a lot of the older folks. They're moving out of the area to go live with their family or go into a nursing home. That's not right. They want to stay where they are. Even young families on a fixed income, they can't afford these high-rise prices. Yeah, we can bring more value into the city, but that all takes time. We can attract these CEOs and their families that have a lot of income and that gladly pay more than their fair share, but we're not at the point that we have all those people in there to help pick up the slack. About three years, four years ago, people would come up and say, yes, we want the new high school. We'll pay more than our home, I mean, what we want. To be truthful, I would love to have said to them, put your money where your mouth is. If you can donate more money, put it into a fund for the school, to help them with the fundraising, to push it forward, to help those that can't afford it.
A side note on that, actually, I remember superintendent brought me in, along with about 20 other CEOs into the library, hit us up for some cash. I told her, no. So just for the record, I did say no, six, seven years ago on that one. It was a good effort, though.
If we can figure a way that we can get the schools to hold their lines, I mean, If we can figure a way that we can get the schools to hold their lines, I mean, not flat-fund it, but look harder at the budgets to keep them the lowest they can and still provide an education. And our city manager, he works hard with our directors to try to pull their budgets down, then I may, if we can come up with a mill rate that's more acceptable, I may vote for this. But till then, no, I can't.
More acceptable. Do you have any range of acceptability?
On the state, I mean, on the school? No. With me, I have to look at the three-pronged approach. What the school's going to have to increase the mill rate on their share, what the city manager has to on his side, and this.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see, my magic number's like 100 on the right-hand side with operating costs.
Oh, okay.
But I don't want to include, I don't think we should include fundraising. I think that should be extra, because trying to include that, if we don't meet that goal, I mean, I do want to do fundraising, but I think that should be, you know, okay, we want to do something special to the fields or something.
So, you're looking at about $100 pre-fundraising. So, $100 increase, which I'm not sure what that would translate to.
For what year, Dan? The first year or what?
11 million.
What are you talking about, Dan?
Well, no, in the, in the oper, including operating costs.
11 million.
And I think that, I don't think we should include the fundraising, because I think that should be extra, because we don't want to have to rely on that if we don't get it, you know. That's, yeah, that's, I mean, talking numbers.
So, the city council has to approve this. So, I think, before we spin our wheels anymore, they should come up to an agreement what they will approve, and then we'll have to cut to get there.
Or, last year, you did a wonderful thing. You didn't like our budget, and you said, let it go to referendum. And if it passes, it passes. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. And by golly, it passed.
71 to 29.
Thank you. So, it did pass. So, instead of deciding here in this room with us, why don't we say, let it go to referendum, and let the community decide whether they want yea or nay on this?
Just a clarification. We actually like the budget, and we were thankful, very, very thankful, the school committee and the superintendent for helping us out in a financial pinch and cutting what you did. That was great. And that was, I'm glad it passed. It should have passed by such a wide margin, and the council supported it. So, thank you.
I understand that you have to listen to certain voices, and my voices are the students. So, I'm going to speak that, I have a lot to say, but we have, in this community, a chance of a lifetime. We have been given a gift that we are to create a high school, and we have been committed from the beginning that this would be a community high school. We have been open-minded. We have been listening and listening, that this is not just a high school for our students, it's a high school for our community. We are building for the future, Mr. Walker. We are. And you need to stay, I don't want to get, you need to, no, just a minute. You need to think of a different narrative. It's the narrative that we say. The people that are fixed income, the people who are looking for lower taxes, we want that too. And we believe we can with this new high school. This new high school says that our community is invested in our community. You want us to fundraise. You have to inspire people who have money to want to invest in that. To raise $3 million when they hear a community is not investing at that level, we want to give them inspiration, passion for what we're doing, to see that this community is moving forward. Our students have had a high school without an auditorium, a cafeteria in a basement with no windows, one science lab, a media center that doesn't speak to all the needs that a media center could do. They've done an outstanding education with our facility. We should expect more. We deserve more, and this community deserves more. We want to put ourselves on the map. That's what I hear the mayor always say. It's a step forward. Put ourselves on the map. Bring businesses to this community. Then let's make a difference. And I believe we can. You listen to 12 people, I listen to 12 people. I was at the exchange meeting at 23 million, and they couldn't, they were so supportive. I don't want to get into that you went to a meeting, and I went to a meeting. She went to a meeting, he went to a meeting. What does this community deserve? For $16.5 million, they deserve it all. And you want to make revenue for this community. You want to bring businesses in. This is our opportunity. And I feel very passionate about this, because the students and our families deserve this and our community. I want to be proud to live in Auburn. I don't want to be thinking, I need to move.
Would you answer this question? If, if we give you the $10 million, or if we give you $11 million, does that stop you from building this high school?
It's not building the high school we deserve and the community will benefit from. You want us to fundraise, we have to have something to fundraise for, Leroy. This isn't, this, and I have a flyer, and I want you to read the inside of it, because it tells the story. We want people to come here to help the people that you want to help. How are we going to help the people you want to help if we don't start investing in our community? Change the narrative. Be, you want to leave a legacy, Leroy. You want to say, I stood by this. I sold it. I stood by it. Not, I was the one that put a barrier for the community to vote for what they wanted for the last 20 years. You will be a barrier to it.
I disagree with you.
Bob?
I thought we've had some discussion. And I turned Alfredo.
Will you?
I guess, two things. One, I think we have an opportunity, even with the auditorium, going the 1200. Lewiston has been considering such for, well, few years anyway. I think we have an opportunity now to put the 1200-seat Performance Arts Center here. That would kill the continuing talk in Lewiston. We would have the facility. I think that does immediately bring the possibility of the, all those programs coming our way. Artificial turf, I think there's different types of materials that are used now. So, I don't think we necessarily have to use old rubber. But I think, again, we did a study, tourism, sports tourism. These fields are very important to that. You know, Central Maine Community College is making an investment, this investment. Then we do truly have the opportunity to bring some, you know, big tournaments to this area, particularly the summer activities. Soccer, lacrosse is becoming bigger. So, I think that, and I, the last comment with respect to, we've got to show a willingness from the community to make an investment for individuals that were maybe part of our community in the past, recognizing, yes, we've made a statement. We're moving ahead. I think they'd be much more willing to put money on the line and have a naming right for whatever it might be. You know, concession stand, the press box, some part of the Performance Arts Center, certainly seats in the auditorium. But unless we upfront say, we're willing to do this, and get it out to the public and say, you know, we are looking to the future, and then truly, let's just truly get out and do some fundraising. Because I think if we show that we want to make this investment, we realize it's, it's not just a high school. It's a, you know, a community facility offering a wide array of programs. I think then there will be donors that are willing to put some money out and put their name on whatever aspects or features of this facility.
It's, it's time that we pull ourselves up from our bootstraps, have faith in our community, and let the community respond. I think that, you know, I think the community can read the newspapers, and they can sense that the council is sort of timid and thinking of the, the poor, and will always have poor. There's no doubt about that. But I think that those people that are able to give will give, and maybe even those people that aren't able to give will give, because this is important. As important as it was to build a two-sheet ice hockey thing. It's been very successful, and it would be actually making money if we actually owned it. But we, we rent it, and somebody else makes the money from, from our activities there.
I feel that if you look outside of Auburn, you look at other communities in the state and in New England, there's a new standard for what school buildings are and how those school buildings are a significant part of your community, as well as the economic development. Bob is right about the economic development. This has been our perception of this from the very beginning. I think we need to recognize that we're going backwards if we refuse this. I really think we need to look ahead. We need to take a chance on our kids. I think that when Bonnie mentioned going directly to the people, I would hate to see this project held up by one or two people. I think the whole community needs to voice their opinion about this. And I'm afraid that if we stop it here, we will impact the fundraising.
I want to build on Superintendent Grandin's idea of changing the narrative. I think to imagine that, yes, it's $100 or $113 per $150,000. But if you think of what can the folks that you represent, Leroy, get for that money? One, imagine that somebody from the senior center can go over to the high school, get a haircut, get a meal, help out with the preschool childcare, help out with the, it's not called woodshop anymore, but the CTE. I think there's a real opportunity to bring those people that you represent so well further into the community because of this high school. So, when you think of $100, $113, $116, what does that really mean? What are they going to get in that value? And I think there's a lot more value that's not just based on a dollar amount, that people are going to be able to access through this.
Mr. Minnelli, you had something to say?
Yeah, I was going to say, Alfredo, if you have a question about the turf fields, maybe you should talk to Holly and ask her how the turf field has fared at Bates College, which they've had for years and years. They play, they played lacrosse there in February.
They do. And they have two, they have, actually have two fields, and I think your, your concern about the crumb that they have on there is well-founded in the past. Because there's been concern, they really have changed that to be much safer. It's also, frankly, much safer for kids to be playing on turf than it is to be, on artificial turf than it is to be playing on grass in terms of their physical well-being.
Just one more comment. I guess I'd much prefer to go out to the public with a figure that covers all of what we truly feel we need. If it gets voted down, I'll accept it, and we'll have to maybe, you know, go to another. But I think to go in low, I think we're undercutting ourselves, we're shooting ourselves in the foot to begin with. I think that, I really think it does come to really try to inspire everybody to get behind it and be willing to, you know, put more money into the pot to get what we really need.
Peter?
So, I've gone to every school building committee meeting, except for one, I think, since I became city manager. I've listened to what everyone has said, particularly listened to all of the city councillors, as you can appreciate. Been talking with them, talking with the mayor as this process has unfolded. I am back where I was some time ago, the idea of waiting to see what happens with the legislature and having a referendum in September, after we know whether we are going to be able to get some relief with the local option sales tax. I've never seen as much support in all my years of being involved in local government. Among municipalities, the mayor has seen the same thing, serving on the Legislative Policy Committee from the MMA, Bay Municipal Association. This is a great opportunity for the city of Auburn. I would hate to think, and I appreciate what everyone is saying, that we determine through the city council that the, a lower amount is what we should be putting out to the voters. And that's what we, we do, and it gets passed, and then we find out that the legislature has approved the local option sales tax, which would have helped solve a lot of the fiscal problems that we're facing. As city manager for the last couple of years, I've worked with the budget. I've looked at the staffing that we have as a city government. I'm aware of the challenges that we face as a service center community, one of the largest service center communities in the state of Maine. And those challenges require us to do certain things. The requests that we're getting for our capital improvement program will be close to $20 million for FY '20. That's not what we're capable of funding. We will probably be, with the council's approval, we'll probably have a CIP anywhere from $6 to $8 million, when the requests are close to $20 million. That tells you a lot in terms of the lack of resources that we have. We've seen valuation growth and property valuation because of the homes that are being built, because of the economic growth that's taking place of over $100 million in Auburn in the last five years. As a result of exemptions by the state legislature, the exemptions have outpaced the valuation. We can't grow our way out of this. We can't cut our way out of this. We need to have more resources. So, I would encourage and urge us to wait and do the referendum after the legislature has adjourned, when we know where we stand regarding our funding. And if the legislature doesn't approve local option sales tax, I don't think we'll be any worse off than at this point.
Faith, would you like to say something? You have not spoken.
Here I am. So, I've just heard from many community members that this is our one opportunity for our students, for Auburn, for our community. Economic growth, that's what we need. That's what we're lacking. Mayor Levesque has said, you know, and I think we're doing a great job with the downtown. We're bringing lots of restaurants in here. I hear friends from Portland, they come down to have beer here. They come down to Fishbones. And I think we have slowly been developing. But I think this is our ticket, and we have been given this great opportunity. Yes, it's a lot of money for all of us to bear, but it's, I think, in the long run, it's going to bring more people to the community, and it's going to pay off. Our students deserve this more than anything. We all know. I graduated from Yale in 1998, and it still looks the exact same. I have three kids in the school system, and, again, I hear from, I talk to a lot of people. I'm in and out of the schools, and they all say, do it right this time, because we didn't do it right the last time we had this opportunity. And I do want to just note that I have had several emails this week that, from parents, faculty, committee members, just about the 1200-seat auditorium, they, they could, everybody I talked to is, go for the 1200-seat, because nobody else has it. We need it. We need to be able to fit our entire student body into that for, otherwise, that, again, would be, in my opinion, a disjustance to not do that.
Bob?
I guess I'm going to disagree with our manager. I might as well put my views out immediately.
All right.
I think that there's no reason to wait. I think that even if things go well through the legislature, if that money does become available, you know, we may be forced to have a second vote in September anyway. But to wait, I think is a mistake. If, if we put this out, if it passes, we move ahead. And I think it does allow us to go into fundraising much quicker. We have shown our willingness to, you know, make the proper investment. If we get the windfall, which, you know, you may have a better feeling than I do, but considering what monies are being talked about in Augusta for different programs, I'm not sure how much money's going to be given back to communities. But no, I think we need to vote, and we need to know in June, so we can move ahead with fundraising. And if it fails, it fails, and then we will have a vote in September. And we, and we may come back with the same figure. And we, and we may come back with the same figure if we get that windfall from the state. We may have the figure back up there, but I think we need the vote in June.
All right, the mayor has some news or some information or some whatever to share with you.
Yeah, just listen. I've listened to everybody in the public in here and this, and, you know, everybody has great intent, everybody wants a new high school, I think we're there, I think we're close. I think there's certain things and conditions that we can agree to upon right now and some different ways of looking at it that can get us to the yes. Let me just run down some numbers. First of all, you know, I want to just keep at the back of our head that we have contingency at a local share of 1.35 million dollars roughly, five percent of the overall. That's a local share for contingency, okay? Contingency is whoops just in case, okay? So, let's keep that back there.
Say that again, Jason.
Contingency, 1.35?
I get it, but say it again.
I'll let the architects explain the official definition of contingency, but it's the whoops, you know, we screwed up, or oh, this guy's coming in higher, or we found dynamite. It's 1.35 million.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Mm-hmm. Drilling, you know, asbestos, you never know what's going to be in the ground, right?
If it's in the ground, it's okay.
Unless you dig it up. So, you got a contingency there. So, let's keep that in the back of our mind, okay? If we look back at the, look back at where we're at and listening to everybody and kind of where we need to be in order to kind of get this to where it needs to go, I'm finding a little bit of trepidation, a little bit of concern about hitting some lofty or potentially lofty fundraising goals. So, I want to address that too. So, first thing I'm going to do is, I'm going to try to get the overall upfront bond down. And here's what I'm going to propose. I'm going to propose that we eliminate $175,000 from auditorium, $175,000 from concessions. And now I'm not, I'm just throwing auditorium and concessions out there, okay? There could be some other value engineering, but these are small percentages over the entire line items for each. The elimination of the turf field, the second turf field, that's $700,000. It's total savings of 1.1 million dollars. Landscaping, local share, $450,000. Okay? I propose taking that out of the bond and putting that on the back of the fundraising amount. That brings our total bonding down from 16.5 to roughly 15 million dollars and 50 grand extra, plus or minus, okay? So, that gives us a new 15 million before fundraising. The $450,000 for landscaping is critical. That or we're going to have a high school in a desert with like 10 blades of grass, okay? We all know the importance. What that does do is it puts the onus a little bit back on to the fundraising efforts to encourage those to actually happen. I think that's a, it's a part guarantee, and I don't want to be taken the wrong way, but it helps us feel better knowing that fundraising will actually take place and we can get behind that because it's absolutely needed, okay?
I agree with you. I don't think there was any doubt that we were going to fundraise.
There's doubt. So, this eliminates doubt.
There's no doubt.
Listen, if you could, you can argue with me or you can try to let me get to a solution, Bonnie.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Perfect. $450,000 of fundraising brings a new fundraising total, not to 5 million, but to 3.5 million. Now, that fundraising total is not just solely on fundraising, but if they can have some operational savings on both the city side and the school side through any type of consolidation, MOUs, so forth, that's going to take, as Bob, you said quite some time ago, it's going to take time to work in. We're now giving ourselves a two-year window to get into that fundraising groove and that consolidation groove in order to bring that down even further. We had thirteen point, uh, excuse me, 3.5 million in fundraising, taking that off 15, you're down to 11.5 million net, okay? 11.5 million net by the time the new school opens. So, the law can be made up of that 3.5 million, whether it be economic, granted, we have to bond for that now, okay, or excuse me, we have to bond for that in a couple of years. But it brings us to time to have economic development, rev share increases potentially from the state, consolidation and efficiencies there, as well as execute the fundraising plan. And I think all those combined will get us to that 11.5 million dollars net. And I think that is the range. I'm hearing Alfreda, I'm hearing Leroy, and again, we're talking second turf and we're talking small value-added cuts or value-engineered cuts across the board in other areas.
What do you, so with all that, so what's the number that we would go to the public with?
You go to the public with a bond of 15 million, but the storyline on three and a half million is the goal for fundraising as well as efficiencies, cost cutting, so forth, okay? That combo, if you would.
When you're talking landscaping, I think you're right. I think there'd be a number of landscapers within the area that adopt a spot within the school area. So, I think that...
It is truly one thing that can wait, and it should wait till the very end phase. So, you know, of construction, of course.
So, your proposal is 15 million?
15 million, Bob, okay? With a guarantee, guarantee, there's hardly any guarantees, no guarantees. I take that back, bad choice of words. I'd love to see some sort of clawback or something, but that's tricky. But 3.5 million is a combined goal, city and school board, city council and school board, to achieve through a combination of fundraising and efficiencies.
Jason, if we can find the money, the 175,000 for this and that and whatever, if it goes back to the building committee and the building committee says, we still want the auditorium seats, but we can do without whatever, doesn't matter to you, as long as we get the...
There's, there's two follow-up questions I have for everybody, okay? Because there's two arguments here. There's dollars, which I'm hearing the predominant argument on, and then there's also functionality. I think Councilor Fornia brought that up very well. And yes, I even have pause on the size of the auditorium. But with that said, you know, if we can address, as long as those cuts don't turn any yeses into nos, that's important because it's a balance. You don't want to cut so much, and that's why it's, you know, compromised. I don't want Councilor Lozani or Councilor Young to say, wait, too much, now I'm a no, and then all of a sudden we're back to the beginning.
Well, I think that it's only fair that the, that the building committee has worked on this for two years plus, that they could, that, that they know what's going on and that they can say, you know, we really believe in that second turf field, or we really believe in the 1,200-seat auditorium, but we can do without this or we can cut that. Then I think that needs to go back to the building committee who's got blood, sweat, and tears in it and let them decide.
Assistant Council, what do you think?
Yeah, no, and I, I just want to comment that this goes into effect in two years. So, the referendum will say up to a certain amount, but not to exceed it, right? So, everybody right now is in the mindset, it's 16.5 million, that's the bond. If we approve it in June, we have to spend 16.5 million. We have a lot of work to go before we know what the exact bond amount. You're going to referendum with a bond at the worst-case scenario and it doesn't go into effect for two years, three years. So, evaluation can go up, there will be an increase in state funding because of operational costs and so forth, the fundraising efforts. I think we have to be careful that we're saying to the community, we're relying on you for 3.5 million dollars outside of what we're going to ask for you for your increase in taxes. And, and because I have been working with fundraising advisors on plans for fundraising. And the number one thing they, they say is, people, big donors want to see a commitment from the community. They want to say that you're all in and then we're all in. To say, well, now you're not getting the landscaping unless you fundraise, you're making a lot of assumptions that the local landscapers are going to come up with a half a million dollars. So, I think we have to be careful that if this is important, we have, as you said, two years, two and a half years to bring that mill rate down. I know it's scary, we have to put numbers out. And that's what scares me about these numbers is they're based on today. If what the city manager says, I mean, there's the narrative, let's all go out and support the city, the city manager's concept, but to say, that's why this, this is hard. People are hearing, oh, it's a hundred dollars. We don't know if it's a hundred and thirty dollars. Today, it's a hundred and thirty dollars. So, just, the 16.5 is the ceiling. When they vote, it says up to 16.5. We could be happily surprised in two years once all the construction bids come in, which everything with the fundraising, that we're actually are doing 11 million. I, I think we have to say to the, the community, we're, this is what we're building, a state-of-the-art high school for this community. And in two years, we will be working hard through many avenues to bring in the most cost-efficient mill rate. We have to look at our CIP. How can that help support some of this? Some of the CIP dollars can be going towards some of these items as well. So, I, I think, and, and to Bonnie's point, if you, if, if the council says 15 million, then we have a building committee meeting and we say, how do we get to the 15 million? That's my view.
Let's ask, I'm going to ask the council right now. How do you feel about 15 million with kind of a joint work effort for three and a half million dollars? Again, joint work effort for three and a half million dollars of fundraising.
I, I think that sounds like a good compromise, I really do. It'll bring it down. I would like to see it go to referendum and it'll be voted on because there'll be no question because it's more...
Councilor Walker?
That's what I want to see.
Thoughts on this plan?
I'll just give you one thought. When Andy comes back and tells me that he's willing to go with the 15 and not 11, I'll follow his. Other than that, I'm sticking to the 11.
Even though net after fundraising gets us down to 11, 11.5? Any guarantees on that from you? Anything you need in order to reaffirm you that we're going to hit that goal?
I'll give you this one. If you guarantee this, the Mr. Manager over there knows that we have people right now that are waiting that maybe will lose their home. If I vote for this, whatever it is you want, nobody loses their home in the next five years because of the increase in the taxes. Give me that answer and I'll vote right now for your 15 million dollars.
Well, hold on, don't, 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 don't paint it on me as it's my plan. Well, it is, I guess, but...
I can't guarantee that.
But we're going to put people out of their home, I'm telling you right now, if we vote for 15 million dollars.
I'm obviously concerned about the, the impact on taxpayers. That's why I've suggested what I have. At the same time, I would like to see the best high school that we could possibly build. So, it's a very challenging question. We don't have the resources that we need to have as a community. That's why I've suggested what I have regarding the legislature and just waiting a little while. Was it six years ago when there was an attempt made to build a new high school based totally on local share? That was six years ago. I'm suggesting that we wait between June and September.
And just to be aware, if we wait, the DOE will reexamine these numbers. I'm just telling you, Scott Brown said...
I understand.
Okay? I'm just saying, you're...
I don't know why they would change their attitude.
Not, not attitude, not attitude. This is based on current costs.
Yeah, three months.
I'm concerned if we wait that we will be out of sync with the actual building of the project, that we'll lose time.
No, we will not.
All right.
Question on process. If we jump ahead and say we get over the hurdles of the city council as it goes, the approval, we're fronting this money for two years, we have the fundraising, what do we tell the people that we fundraising? Give us some money so we can buy down the, the increase in the tax rate? Is that what we're going to tell them?
But how much money are we going to get, Dave?
Well, that's not inspirational, if that's what you're asking me.
Well, for, for the physical construction, right? That's what we're bonding for, right?
Right. I'm just, I'm just, right. I'm, I'm saying if we go out and say, this is because the, the city, the city is not supporting the full amount...
No, no, this, say the city does go with the 16 million. Money comes in. Can that money be used to...
Absolutely. That's what it will be.
To buy down the, the tax rate?
Absolutely.
And they will know that?
Correct.
Okay. But it would show that the, but we, we have enough faith in the community that they were going to come forth, we're going to front the money.
Correct.
Yeah, good point over here about fundraising extra, if you want that second turf facility. We could fundraise more for it. Yeah, that can be...
Now, the mayor is saying, put the backs on, we can have this if you kick in the money. And I guess suppose you could put the turf in later on. And I guess some school departments did that, the outside, because that's not going to be constructed until later on anyway.
Mr. Minnealy, do you have something to say?
I think it's up to the city council, but if there was one thing I would leave out, it would be that second turf field.
Actually, it's not up to the city council, it's up to the building committee to decide what they want to cut and what they don't want to cut and come back with a figure. That's what...
Yeah.
That's what, that's, they may decide that.
And they may decide that. And there has been talk among all of us where we could cut on it. And we, some of us have, have talked about it and others of us haven't talked about it, but there's been talk what we could cut and what we could not cut. This is a workshop and unfortunately, we don't have to open it to the public. So, I do apologize for that. Belinda?
The good city manager who's talking about the local option tax and what the legislature may or may not do.
Right.
As a way to, to show their support or not, I challenge you, put this out for referendum now. Get the public of Auburn's support to see if they support the local option tax. And if they do, that will send a message to Augusta, to our legislature, that we want this to happen.
So, what are you saying, to put the referendum out for the local-only tax?
That's a different topic.
It's a different thing, I understand that.
Right. But that's a way that we could show support for it to Augusta.
Let's not get into it.
And also get the money. And then the other thing is that I want to find out, in Katie's and your school budget this year, how much of a mill rate increase is it going to be this year so far?
Next year or this year?
In the, in the coming up budget we're working on.
We, we've just got parts of the drivers tonight. That's all we got. So, we haven't got anything else, any, any money, any funds that totaled anything on it. All right, so this, I'm really sorry, but I'm not going to open it up to the public, but I do urge you all to call your elected officials, school board and the city council. The city council and the school board will vote on it and go from there on it. So, please let the city council and the school board know what your thoughts are. And in the meantime, I would encourage us to take this back to the building committee with a figure and see what they can come up with and go from there.
I know we, there was talk of 15 million, but are the people who were yes for the 16.5 million in for the 15 million? I just, I would hate to have the votes go down the other way.
Yeah, you have to check right in.
School committee, are you in for 15 million instead of 16, Dan?
I don't like including the fundraising. I don't like that.
Okay, so if we didn't include the fundraising in the 15 million with the idea that we are going to fundraise, would you be in it for the 15 million or the 16?
I, I still don't like the, like adding the fundraising to that.
No fundraising, no fundraising.
So, if you go, you know, like 11.5, then you add the fundraising and that's where I would...
So, you're down to 11.5 plus fundraising.
Funding, yes.
Pat?
The only, the only thing I would back would be dropping that...
Go ahead.
Dropping the second turf field.
You what?
That's the only thing I would want to cut.
Okay. Alfreda, you're, you're a no still. Would you be, would you go with...
I'm at the 15, I'm at the 15, and I think if we can get to that 15 collectively, then that's...
16. 16. Bob?
We vote no, though, if it's 15.
I'm okay with it, but I do think if there's anything to drop would be the second turf field.
Okay. I got all my school board? Okay. Thank you very much. I think that it's eight o'clock and we have discussed this...
Already.
We've discussed this inside and out. We have some direction to take back to our building committee and see what happens from there.
I'm going to give you the straw poll and we'll adjust the numbers to reflect...
One more question? I'm just curious, what are we going to be voting for when we vote? Are we voting for specific numbers or are we voting...
When we go to referendum?
No, when we vote before next week.
Yeah, we're going to vote for numbers on it.
Okay. But is it going to be a one number or is it going to include fundraising?
One number.
One total number.
It can include fundraising.
Right, total number. Without, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
That's why we want to try to get some sort of guarantee.